Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, we got Mike on. Everybody hear me? Okay. All right, great. Well, good evening and let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council here on Tuesday, May 5th. It's 5:30 PM and welcome everyone tonight to our meeting and those watching online or through cable. And thank you for being here. It's been a busy couple of weeks here in Steenville and I just want to take this moment to thank everyone in the community for the support for the storm recovery and especially the city staff, first responders, and those that have done a monumental effort to help with the recovery of the storm damage. What a great program that was put in place in very short notice to allow debris to be taken to the city park. Ordinarily that would have been taken to the landfill. Both the hall out there and the fee were both waived as a way to try to help us recover as quickly as possible and also want to thank Pat for the coordination with the county on that as he came together very, very well. So, safety was paramount and thank God no one was seriously injured in that. We're also obviously thankful for the rain, much needed, and just a safe recovery that continues. Also want to just say thanks and continue for citizens to be aware of the great work that's being done to ensure that contractors are properly permitted for their solicitation door-to-door. And if you're not aware or familiar with that program, please check with City Hall, especially if you're getting recurring visits from contractors, but also just wanted to point that out. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that Thursday is the National Day of Prayer. There'll be a session in the courthouse and then the ministerial alliance in Erath County has organized hourly sessions throughout the church community, so just wanted to remind people of that. And then finally, before we get into the order of business, I wanted to say a couple of things about the headlines in the paper today and just offer a sense of condolence for those that were told at FMC today that they are just recently that they no longer have a job. As you probably read in there, 23% of that workforce has been laid out since the oil and gas has been bottled out thanks to some friends in the Middle East, which I won't go into those details. But it is, it's important, I think, to note that those people still need a job in our community. And if there was ever a realization of the need for us to focus on our economy, I would say, what else do you need to hear? And so, one, just concerns for the families because I know that that's a trying time for you, but secondly, I just say it's a call for this community to rally about a very important issue as it relates to our community. Okay, with that, we'll move to the formal agenda items and that's begin with Citizens' General Discussion. If there's anyone that's wishing to come forward and say anything before the council. I didn't get any notices from Cindy, so I'm not aware of any, but just wanted to ask if there's anybody that's wanting to come forward at this time. All right, if not, then we'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is a really exciting presentation tonight. An arrangement between Steenville, the city of Steenville and Tarleton that's done some great work and Dr. Baker is here tonight. WK Gordon endowed Chair in History from Tarleton to give us a presentation on some great work that he and some students and I understand one council member have been involved with to look at downtown historic resources in a survey. So, Dr. Baker, if you'd just please come forward and give us your presentation.
Mayor Weldon, thank you for the opportunity to speak with council and the public about the collaborative project between Tarleton State University and the city in undertaking a historic resources inventory in the 25-square blocks of the historic district of Steenville plus about two dozen outlying structures. This came about as a result of conversations back in August of last year that the mayor and property owner Michelle Dunkerly and I had regarding the possibility of such an inventory similar to a project that my historic preservation students from Tarleton undertook five years ago for the city of Glen Rose. The purpose of this project, which generally is viewed as the foundation stone for any future historic preservation efforts, is to determine exactly what historic resources that a community has. The students working with me have prepared written documentation. They've prepared documentary photographs. They have prowled the 25-square blocks of the core of Steenville looking at its built environment and recording what they've found. They've gone to historic sources such as sandburn fire insurance maps. This is a sample of a 1907 map of Steenville color-coded for the construction materials of buildings in the year 1907. They've used the oldest surviving city directory of Steenville from the year 1940. They've used scores of historic photographs from the Steenville Historical House Museum and the Cross Timbers Picture Project and are preparing inventory forms, samples of which I gave the city secretary and a project that will be completed by owner before the 31st of this month. I'd like to ask each of my five students plus my auditing student, Mr. Wagner, if they will share with the council one brief example of an experience that they had undertaking the project. So, students are going to introduce themselves and they've decided among themselves what order they're going to speak. So, students, number one.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Daniel and I'm a senior at Tarleton State University. The building that I'll be talking about tonight is located at 322 Belknap and the experience that has most impacted me was when we were surveying the residential area of downtown Steenville and we discovered this beautiful white house. This house seemed to be neglected for many years and the Porsche's collapsing and it desperately needs repairs. If you look inside the windows, you can see Victorian furniture and a grand staircase as well as a beautiful fireplace. We were in all of the beautiful craftsmanship of this house. This house should not be left to waste away when there are so many potentials for it. It could be turned into a beautiful bed and breakfast so the citizens of Steenville and tourists will be able to admire the beauty of this house as well as the nearby downtown area. Thank you.
I'm Lauren Russell. I'm a post-bac student at Tarleton. The building I'm going to talk about is at Belknap and McNeele. On the side of it, it is painted in the garden. What interested me about this building was I've taken other classes at Tarleton and in those other classes, a professor of mine talked about how we had a chicken hatchery in downtown Steenville and I never really fully believed the stories he told about this chicken hatchery and where it was located. Well, getting into this survey of downtown Steenville, we stumbled across this building and figured out that it was actually in this building. And so, I was able to kind of prove the stories that the other professor told of Steenville. Thank you all.
My name is Roberta Minker and I'm a senior at Tarleton. And my experience that I've enjoyed the most in this class is meeting the building owners who are taking time and effort to preserve their historic buildings. I've met both owners of houses and commercial buildings who have great enthusiasm for saving their and using their buildings instead of just tearing them down. Repurposing historic buildings not only makes the space usable, but also gives new life to the historic buildings. And my hope is, is that our survey will inspire more owners to preserve their buildings. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Brown and I'm a sophomore at Tarleton State University. Mine was more of a personal aspect because we got to meet, as she said, a lot of the people who own the buildings, so we met a lot of local historians. And we worked with a lot of Mavs and the directory, but you didn't get a lot of the personal history as you do when you meet the people who own the buildings. I got to know an older woman from the community who gave me a lot of information on the square because of personal stories she has working in the buildings in the 40s and we were able to meet the owner of several houses who gave us informations of when the buildings were built and how the buildings progressed through its time period. And it was wonderful we came to know them and knowing that personal history of Steenville. And thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Lloyd. I am the graduate assistant for the Social Science Department at Tarleton State University. As the granddaughter of a contractor, I was most interested in the restoration process for the First National Bank. For me, walking into an old building, which is something that I have done for years and years and years, there's no other feeling than the first time you walk through those doors. Because one, you never know what you're going to find, right? And two, there's this very specific smell and it's a smell that you will always remember. So, back to the bank building. I have been in search of a particular stain for a very long time. One of the things that I grew up doing was restoring old houses, of course not the way that Mr. Lee Evans and his contractors are doing, but nevertheless, rebuilding gables and things like that. But I was able to find a stain that I've been looking for for years. It's called Early American by Minwax, just so y'all know. And I was super excited about it because for me, it's the perfect stain. And honestly, that's one of those things that I would have never found had it not been for this class. And I really, really recommend everyone just kind of take time out, look at the old buildings, talk to the people who have these buildings, learn the stories of these buildings. It's a very enriching experience, so thank you.
And we have a sixth student who officially audited the class as an auditing student from Tarleton State University. And I'd like to ask Boyd Wagner, tell us what your experience was. This gentleman was diligent. He came to class every day.
He actually came to class.
You would think he was getting academic credit and we have greatly enjoyed and valued his contribution. So, Boyd, what was it like auditing a Tarleton class?
Well, it was kind of fun being around some young people, but I don't do that very often. Anyway, I will say, the teacher made it really interesting because he was always enthused about it and complimentary to everybody. But why I did that, I guess I've just been interested in old buildings for some reason. You know, I owned the First National Bank building for a while and I sold that and there's a lady doing a lot of work, you know, fixing it up. And now I own the one at the, the address is 104 East College. It was the Napa Building. It's just an old rock building, which is supposedly one of the, maybe the second oldest building in town. And part of my motive for doing this was to try to learn how to get the National Historic Designation for that building. And it may work out because one of those students volunteered to do that for me. I guess the most interesting thing I noticed, we always hear, I say, that the oldest building in town supposedly is that old dinner place over there. They call it the Dinner Bill. Yeah, that's what they hear. And that supposedly the one I own is the second oldest. I have the contract to build that one. Mine, it was in the summer of 1873 when they contracted to build that building. But anyway, we did see a building. It was kind of interesting. There's practically no old wooden buildings built because every time they had a fire, all of them burned down. The only ones that made it was the Brockmans. But there was one that I wouldn't have ever noticed it, but the professor figured it out. Those sandburn maps, it's kind of interesting because they, what they did way back, was the first one 1885?
First in Steenville, yeah.
Yeah, and basically what they did, they were doing it for fire insurance industry because if the fire insurance company, somebody said, hey, we want to insure a building at so-and-so, but the insurance company back in some other state might not even know where it was, but this would have a list of every address and you could go find out what was there, you know? And the first time it showed up on the map was 1885 and that's the only reason we would have known it was there. Because you can't tell if it was that old because it's been added to it, you know, that kind of stuff. But it was just kind of interesting to see an old wooden building that's been here at least since 1885. And that's, I guess that was, we know it was, you know, built before that because it showed up in 1885. That's all I got to say, but it was interesting.
Can I answer any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Baker?
The results will be delivered to Mr. Bridges, owner before the 31st of this month, so you've got a product on the way.
If you have any questions about things before about 1920, you can ask Alan. He was around back in the day.
I would answer that, but I defer to your greater knowledge.
Thank you for letting us come.
All right, well, Dr. Baker, let me again thank you very much for your leadership in this and your excitement. It's great to have you here and the product that your students are going to produce is going to be really priceless for our community as we look for ways to preserve our heritage and appreciate it. So, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you so much.
And students, thanks for coming tonight. It's great to hear from you.
Mayor, this is one of the reasons something like a tip would be good for us to consider someday. It's a very issue.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that comes from this is you know what you have and then it makes you more motivated to do something about it. So, that's great. And so, I just want to thank the city for their effort with Tarleton and hopefully this is a sign of other things to come where we work with some of the professors and students at Tarleton to provide input to projects that we're working on that can create, as you said, Dr. Baker, collaboration benefits both, so thank you very much.
Can I say just one thing? You asked me for those documents. I got pretty far down the line to getting that stuff done on my building years ago. You asked me for a copy of that and I've got it in the car and I'll get it to you tomorrow or something.
How do you get to a class of ones? That a what? He didn't go to the hospital that much, did he?
No, this is harder than the hospital.
All right, so we'll move on now to item four on the agenda, which is a hearing under section 112, point one, Appeal from Denial or Revocation of Permits requested by Mr. Noah Kennedy. And at this time, I'll open up a public hearing for the council to hear this appeal. And I'll ask if Mr. Bridges will introduce the topic and then we'll go from there.
Mayor and council, if you'll recall, sometime back, council passed an ordinance regarding solicitations and this particularly dealt with uninvited solicitations, your door-to-door solicitors. This ordinance was put in place to protect our residents from being bothered, annoyed, taken advantage of by some of these outside solicitors who are less than reputable. So, there, a process was established to register these folks as they come into town and hold them more accountable for their actions. And we had, we have a process for approving or disproving these applicants. And in this particular case tonight, this particular applicant, Mr. Kennedy, was not approved for solicitation permit. He visited with Chief King about it. Chief King has upheld that decision. And now, Mr. Kennedy is exercising his right under the ordinance to come before you all and appeal Chief King's decision. And so, I'll ask Chief King to come to the microphone and explain the process and why the, why Mr. Kennedy's application, or permit was rejected.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, as part of the memo in your packet, one of the sections in that ordinance reads that a permit will not be issued if there's an affirmative statement as to whether the applicant has ever been convicted of or pleaded nolo contendere to a misdemeanor involving fraud, theft, embezzlement, burglary, fraudulent conversion, or misappropriation of property within the preceding 10 years, or convicted of or pleaded nolo contendere to any felony or any offense involving more interpretive. In our background investigation, after Mr. Kennedy did complete an application and submitted it for the background investigation, in 2005, December of 2005, he did plead guilty to a theft in Hood County. So, he's just within the 10 years on that. It won't expire till December. And then, in November of 2010, he pled guilty to a state jail felony controlled substance offense here in Erath County. And so, because of that, the ordinance doesn't allow for any variance or any decision-making on that. It falls within the purview of, the only decision is to deny the ordinance and so that's the decision that I made. As Mr. Bridges said, he's exercised his right to appeal and discussed that with you this evening.
Okay, any questions for Chief King?
Chief, can you tell me, has the ordinance done what it was intended to do to help the citizens be more comfortable when they deal with solicitors and other people going from house to house or wherever they might run into them?
Without speaking for the citizens, I would think it has because this, what we're in right now is kind of extraordinary times. We actually don't have very many approved solicitation permits anymore.
Okay.
It, once this ordinance went into place, some of the usual out-of-town companies and firms that used to come into Steenville on a regular basis were no longer allowed to come in and do business anymore. None of their employees passed our background checks.
Is this just for the owner of the company or for all their employees also?
Every, everybody who's going to solicit. So, if the owner's going to do it, it would apply to them and then any of their employees as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, basically whoever's the person going door-to-door.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Chief, do you have? Questions?
Do you have the statistics that we visited about earlier?
Yes, sir. Since last Monday, since the end of our storms, on the approved list that's on our website is 71 businesses with 150 individual solicitors. We have denied 19 solicitors from 13 businesses. And then, one of those businesses, we've denied the business and all of their employees. And then, last Friday, I revoked one business along with all of their employees.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to come forward and address the council?
I have a letter here for each of you. Would you like it down or after?
Your choice.
All right, go ahead.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the council, my name's Noah Kennedy, owner of Kennedy Tree Experts. Since 1957, my family's business has taken pride in displaying the highest quality tree work possible. We've also taken pride in our honesty and integrity when it comes to our work. For three generations, we've been family and veteran-owned, which our work reflects. I come before you today to appeal my denial of an individual solicitation permit. I was told because I got into some minor trouble in my youthful days that I was not allowed to obtain such a permit. I was given this answer with no inquiry, interview, or second thought. It's my understanding that the justice system is supposed to hold people accountable of their actions and to make them pay penance for their misdeeds so that they will not repeat such actions. If this is true, then I hope the city has not lost faith in the system it swore to uphold. It seems to me if one has learned from the folly of his youth and bettered himself before his God, his family, and his peers, that we should not punish him, but allow him to continue on. As a resident of this community, I see no reason why I should not be allowed to solicit my trade while those from afar come in and prosper. I would think in the economic times that we live in, we would want to keep as much business located in this community as possible instead of from down the road. I live, work, shop, and eat in this city, which is why I have a hard time understanding why I should not be allowed to solicit my work to earn my money. Since I've taken ownership of this company and my birthright, I've never had one complaint about my work. I've never accepted payment until my services were completed and I've never left a customer unhappy. As of right now, I am the only tree service who has even attempted to receive this permit. I could have done as the rest and went door-to-door without the permit, but instead I chose to follow the city ordinance and apply, for which I was denied anyway. I've done pro bono work for organizations in this town such as the Girl Scouts. I could have charged them well over $6,000 and been completely comfortable in my actions, but I didn't charge them a dime. I'm not out to scam anyone. I'm a God-fearing, veteran, family businessman who only asks permission to work in the city that he resides in and loves dearly. I would hope we as a society can leave the past in the past and only better our futures through an honest day's work. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Any questions for Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Kennedy, tell me something about yourself. Since you lived here, how long you lived in Steenville for?
I've lived here since 2009.
And what have you been doing since 2009?
I've been trimming trees and my wife told me to get a real job when the economy tanked.
And what did you do then?
I've worked at HEB. I'm currently working at Summer Sky Treatment as a maintenance and IT tech.
How long you been back in the tree business for?
I've been in the tree business all my life. I started shagging brush from my daddy when I was five years old. On my eighth birthday, they sent me up a tree with a chainsaw for the first time. So, in two weeks, that'll be 20 years climbing trees.
Typically, how much work do you do monthly, yearly? What's your load line?
I, since I have a regular nine-to-five, I like to keep it to smaller jobs during the week, put the bigger jobs out on the weekends. I stay fairly busy.
So, you're working 40 hours a week in another job plus this one?
Yes, sir.
You got a family?
Yes, sir. Five.
Kids and?
Yes, sir. Three.
Three kids?
Yes, sir. 16, 15, and four.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You mentioned problems in your youth. How old are you now?
I'm about to be 28.
And this controlled substance was five years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can't you get your business going without going door-to-door by reputation or something or whatever?
I could, but this being the family business that I've known, we've done multiple storm cleanups. Alicia, Rita, Katrina. You drive down the road, you see a tree lane on somebody's house, you're going to go knock on the door and say, I can take care of that for you. And I can do it better than some guy with a bucket truck from Fort Worth. That's all I got.
Any other questions? Mr. Sweeney?
Well, I'm not sure it's for Noah, but is the rule where the ordinance, where he just can't solicit or he can't do business?
He cannot solicit.
Just can't solicit.
He can still do business if he is invited to a location.
So, he could advertise in the paper, etc., solicitorship is door-to-door?
He just cannot solicit door-to-door.
It's not the company that's prohibited, it's Mr. Kennedy.
Right.
The person.
Right, okay. So do you have anybody else that can go door-to-door?
I could.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A related question, if I might. Mayor, do you have other employees, Mr. Kennedy?
It's just myself, my father, occasionally my little brothers when we can pull them out of bed on a weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll open it up for the council discussion and we'll need a motion.
Mayor, the ordinance is there for a reason and is working like it's supposed to. I believe in the discussion, the solution to Mr. Kennedy's problem was identified by him being able to have someone working for his company that can pass the background test due door-to-door soliciting for him. He can also advertise in any means that he pleases to continue doing business in the city. But the ordinance is there for a reason, and perhaps if things continue on like they have for the last five years, then five years from now, then Mr. Kennedy himself can pass the background test. So I believe the best course of action at this time is to uphold the decision by Chief King and deny the appeal for the solicitation permit of Mr. Kennedy.
So is that presented in the form of a motion? Or is that, okay. So have a motion to uphold the denial of issuance of a solicitation permit to Noah Kennedy. Do I, if you're a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Dannel and seconded by Mr. Nix to deny issuance of solicitation permits to Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion, please? Mr. Sveen.
Jason, did I understand that if, I understood that it was ten years for a misdemeanor. But felony, was it felonies forever or is it also ten years?
No, sir, there is no time limit.
So in other words, a felon could never solicit door-to-door?
That's correct.
If it was thirty years or forty years down the road?
Right. In his particular case.
It's been five.
Yes, but it was also a deferred adjudication verdict.
So the 2010 verdict was a deferred adjudication?
Yes.
Has he served his deferred adjudication?
No, not yet.
How much time is that?
That was five years and it will be up in November. Now, it will still show that he pled guilty to it, but Mr. Wagner, Mr. Pendleton could speak to, once that's completed, then there's options for expungement and things like that that would remove.
So in November, he'd be able to do it if he went through whatever the process that...
Yes, sir.
Well, deferred adjudication, is that applied to both these things or just...
No, sir, the misdemeanor was, appeared to be a final conviction with six-month probation, I believe.
But that would be, well, that's pretty close to ten years ago.
Yes, sir. That one.
Two-five December.
Yes.
And the deferred adjudication, that's fancy words for saying they postponed the judgment so if, when that time expires, it's like he wasn't convicted at all.
That's correct.
Legally.
But he wasn't convicted, but the wording in our ordinance also says that a person pled guilty or nolo contendere, and so it would still show that he pled guilty to it, and that's why I was speaking of the expungement option down the road.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Real quick, Mr. Kenny, thanks for coming. I'm pretty sympathetic to your issue, I really am, but I tell you right now, I think we're kind of limited as a council what we can do just based upon our ordinances. I mean, we've got to hold ourselves accountable to what's in the law, so we'll let you know that, okay?
Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor of the motion to uphold the deny, denial of issuance of a solicitation permit to Noah Kennedy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, then that motion carries, upholding the issuance to deny solicitation permit.
Do you have a business card?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennedy, could you bring that card to me, please? All right, thank you very much. Kennedy Tree Experts, Noah Kennedy, two-five-four-four-three-four-nine-seven-one-zero. If you want a local vendor to take care of your tree problem in Stevensville, call Noah Kennedy. Thank you.
Is that a solicitation?
He didn't go door-to-door.
I didn't go door-to-door, and if anybody wants to do a background check on me, have at it, so. All right, we'll proceed then to the Planning and Zoning Commission segment of our agenda, and we'll start with item A, and I'll ask Ms. Judy Miller, please, to come to the podium and proceed with item A of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't think this is working, but this is Golf Country Estates Two, fourteen point five-five acres of land. This is the final plat, you may be seeing the preliminary plat not too long ago. This is the layout on an aerial of how the lots will be configured for the subdivision. This is a really new, it's an R1 district, and you have in your packet the layout of the lots and the specifics of all the details of the lots. And these, the developer, the owner, Trent Gay, had submitted these as examples of some of the houses that could be built in that subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on April the fifteenth and recommended approval of the final plat as submitted. The preliminary plat was approved earlier, a couple of months ago, and it carried a condition that the developer comply with the Parkland Dedication Ordinance when the final plat was submitted. The Parkland Dedication component of the subdivision regulations requires that the parkland, that parkland be dedicated at a ratio of one acre of land per fifty dwelling units of single-family, or pay a fee of $600 per lot into the Parkland Dedication Fund, which for the subdivision would be $28,800. Mr. Gay paid that amount to the city before the final plat was submitted to the staff. I've shown you where the plat is located in the northwest corner of the city. Go back to that. And the entire property is R1. Some of it is located in a flood, a hundred-year flood plain. A flood study has been submitted. Water and sewer construction plans have been submitted and reviewed. No part of the golf course, the existing golf course, is being disturbed by this plat. It's in good, it's a good addition to our city. It's really a nice addition to our city. And all other aspects of the final plat are in the ordinance, ready for final approval by the council. Be glad to answer any questions?
Any questions for Judy?
One question. Yeah, this says the property is within the hundred-year flood plain. You mean, it's not in the hundred-year flood plain?
It is within the hundred-year flood plain.
Okay, but it's okay to build on it anyway, right?
Huh? They are submitting, they are submitting the needed documents for the finished floors in the hundred-year flood plain.
Would you explain that?
Pardon me?
Explain what that means. They're not gonna build in a hundred-year flood plain, a house.
They're gonna elevate the foundations.
They have to elevate the foundation.
The water's all in the streets and runs into the...
The finished floor out of the hundred-year flood plain.
These answers are probably in there, but do they have a restrictive covenant on the house size, minimum house size?
Don't know that.
Okay.
Anybody here that can answer that?
Yep.
If you don't know, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
That funds not operate, does not go to Parks and Recreation Operations, it's, that $28,000 deposit is used for improvements or whatever down the road. It's not operational cash.
No, no, it's strictly a federal account for parks and, you know, parks.
Improvements.
It is in R1.
R1.
So the houses have to be 1,500 as it stands now?
Yes.
1,500 square feet, then, okay.
Yes, minimum house size. Seventy-five hundred foot on the square footage on the lot itself.
Okay, any other questions?
That fund's not operate, does not go to Parks and Recreation Operations, it's, that $28,000 deposit is used for improvements or whatever down the road. It's not operational cash.
No, no, it's strictly a federal account for parks and, you know, parks.
Improvements.
It is in R1.
R1.
So the houses have to be 1,500 as it stands now?
Yes.
1,500 square feet, then, okay.
Yes, minimum house size. Seventy-five hundred foot on the square footage on the lot itself.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Nix. Judy, I noticed in your memo that Fries and Nichols have reviewed these plans and apparently have found no issues with them as far as floor elevations or anything else, correct?
Well, they're still reviewing then.
Oh, they are still reviewing.
They're still reviewing. That's not an issue, really. The final plat can be, can be approved. These plans have been submitted since January and been, being reviewed by staff and Fries and Nichols. And there's just small little details that have to be worked out.
Okay.
And we have the control, total control. The mayor's not gonna sign it until those construction drawings are approved.
Okay.
They can't get building permits, da-da-da.
I was gonna say, there's building permits and COs and other things that...
Absolutely.
Okay.
All kinds of failsafe things.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the final plat of Golf Country Estates Two, fourteen point five-five-one acres consisting of forty-eight lots.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve the final plat as presented. Any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? If that motion carries, approval of final plat, Golf Country Estates Two, Jarrett Menifee survey. All right, I'm going to change the order on the agenda here. Talked with Mr. Bridges earlier this evening, and we're gonna, we're gonna skip down to item D and address the public hearing for Dallas Sims, owner of Rezone R1 to R3 multifamily lot, 3A Block Two, Butler Edition, 995 McCart. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider that. We're gonna come back to B and C, but we're gonna, we're gonna address D first.
Okay.
So I'll, at this time, open a public hearing and allow Ms. Miller to give us the staff briefing on that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission did meet on April the fifteenth and recommended denial of this rezoning request to the city council. This request, let me just, the floor is here, get the proper... It's located, can't really tell from that, but it's in that general area. You see the yellow? And it's just a lot off of the yellow area into the white area. Hard to see that. There you go. Rather a large lot for, you know, that area, but it is zoned R1 at this point in time. And the request is go to R3, and that's the denial. Land uses range from homes in the 800-square-foot area to 1,200 square foot in this category. The houses are a mixed state of repair. The house that sits on this lot is not open and accessible, but it is in need of repair and probably would be torn down and a new land use put up if it were rezoned. I did not find any apartments in the immediate area of this rezoning request. The area is zoned, the lot is zoned, or served by water and sewer. Let's go back to this. The future land use plan shows this as single-family. Kind of important. I always bring that up to you because the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan, you have to look at these things when you have zoning cases as to what the future land use plan says, and it says single-family. Go back to this, which is the yellow indicates single-family, the white indicates R3 district, which is the mixed district. And considering any rezoning requests, one of the first questions you should ask is have there been changed conditions to the property or surrounding property that create a hardship on the use of the property as it is currently zoned? In this case, because of the deterioration of the structure that's on this lot, should Mr. Sims choose to tear down the structure or replace it with a new single-family unit, it would have to be the 1,500 square feet. In R3 district, a single-family house would, could be 1,000 square feet. Staff can support a one-lot intrusion, and it's not called spot zoning. If there's one-lot intrusion into this, it is not spot zoning, as was raised at the P and Z meeting. So, you know, with the standards of the 1,500 square feet, I do not think there's a reasonable use of this property, frankly. So Mr. Sims is here this evening. Again, P and Z has recommended denial of the case, and he's here to present his case. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Judy? No, okay, at this time, I'll offer anyone speaking, wishing to come and speak in favor of the denial.
I didn't get current time to register, ma'am.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can speak.
Thank you.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Priscilla Gaston. I live at 3117 Harvard Street North in Irving. I grew up here in Stevensville, and I own two rent houses, and we owned a lot right behind, on McCon, right behind this property. We have, our house is one of the newer ones in the neighborhood. It's twelve years old. This lot on the corner that's being considered has six oak trees and other wonderful trees, lots of green grass, and I'm guessing that if it's replaced by a fourplex, it would be building and concrete parking, and that would be missed. When I spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission last month, everybody wants to be heard. They want to know that somebody's listening, that our voice counts. And of the three requests that they had, they approved two, and they did not approve this, and there was discussion about every one. And I can't tell you how reassuring it was to feel that I was heard, an ordinary person. And I feel like the commission did the right decision, and I encourage you to consider their decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing, yeah, go ahead.
If you do decide to approve this, I'd like to request an eight-foot privacy fence between us and the apartment, the fourplex, or what, they never were clear about what they would put there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You got a question?
It requires supermajority to override the P and Z, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the denial? Or anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the denial? Yes, sir.
I was, my name's Dallas Sims. I'm the owner of the property. I live outside of town, out on County Road 180. I was unable to make the planning and zoning meeting, I had to be at work. And I just wanted to say that currently, I lived in that house when it was a rent house in 2001. When I saw it came up for sale, I thought this, I know this house, I think I can make it in good shape and turn it back into a decent rent house. The project became more than I was able to handle, and I was unable to afford the time that it was going to take to make it back to livable condition. With the rezoning, if it becomes R3... With the rezoning, if it becomes R three, uh, I will maintain ownership of the property. But I, uh, with a friend of mine, we'll be attempting to put, uh, within zoning restrictions, uh, three or four townhome piece of property, uh, or, uh, building on this property. It would increase the value of the property, uh, and would also make it where it's habitated instead of a vacant structure that is dilapidated. I went over there today. I'm owed. Uh, I'm having trouble just finding the time to keep it mowed with this, with, uh, the rezoning. It would be all handled through a company, uh, my buddy's company, that would be doing the building and keeping up the maintenance and have a new and brand-new structure within the city and provide for housing, affordable housing. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sims?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to come and speak in opposition to the denial? All right, seeing none, I'll, uh, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll, uh, open up for the council for discussion or entertain a motion.
Does it require a motion?
Yes.
To overturn, to side with, to, the appeal, it's an appeal of that, of the zoning, it's not?
Mayor.
Yeah, uh, Mr. McDaniel.
In discussion, uh, I'm very familiar with this property. I cross through this intersection at, at Pecan and McCart Street a minimum of two times a day, five or six days out of the week. And, uh, that's a beautiful lot with, with beautiful, large oak trees, and with this rain, that green grass is so pretty. After the P and Z meeting, I had my mind made up that, that by golly, we were going to get behind this and, and, uh, get a supermajority and, and override the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I talked to neighbors. Uh, two weeks ago, the police were out there because of people parking too close to the intersection. It's a great idea. It's just the wrong location. Summer Sky does not have enough parking on their property. They park all along both sides of McCart Street and along one side of Pecan Street. It's, it's not a safe intersection as it is. I, I want to see dirt turned. I, I want to see concrete poured. But this is not the, the right location for it. It's, it's not a safe location, and it, it will hurt, uh, the lady that got up and spoke, Priscilla's, uh, property, property directly behind it because of the congestion, because of all the trees that will be bulldozed to build it. So I'm going to have to move to, uh, deny the request for rezoning from R one to R three on this property.
So your motion is to approve the denial?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Right.
Second.
Approve the denial, uphold the P and Z recommendation.
That's a better way to say it. This whole, the motion is...
To not rezone. It's, it's not, it's not the right location for rezoning.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to uphold the decision, the recommendation from Planning and Zoning to deny the rezon from R one to R three, uh, lot three A Block Two Butler Edition nine nine five McCart. Any discussion?
I don't see any reason to go against Planning and Zoning on this one myself.
Mayor, is there a second?
Uh, Mr. Nix. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries, uh, upholding the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. Uh, Ms. Miller, could I get you to go back to the, uh, area map for this rezoning? I want to ask a question. The one that, that's the, that one. How did we end up with R one in the middle of R three?
I have no idea.
And how did R three become the standard for a residential community that is in, in, in that area? Do, do you know? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Because I heard you say that the majority of these homes are eight hundred to twelve hundred square foot.
They appear to be.
Right, and, um, I just find it interesting that, that in the heart of what's in R three area, we have R one, which if anybody has driven down any of those streets, the oldest part of town has the narrow streets, which is an indication of the, uh, the parking problem that Mr. McDaniel brought up. The lot sizes are smaller. It's easy to see on the map that, that there, there are narrow, long, uh, lots in, in the area. If y'all recall, uh, last month, I, I was doing some research on zoning. And back in the fifties, when, when a lot of this was going on, uh, with zoning of areas like this, the, the norm for a home size was seven hundred and fifty to a thousand square feet. I mean, a thousand square foot home was a big house. So to me, it, it, it makes sense, if you look at it, to say, "Well, this, this was a residential area as it built out." What ma, does not make sense to me is that we've got R one and R three in this configuration.
Correct.
Uh, because it's, one, not conducive to a residential area, and, uh, that's what this is. I mean, if you live in this area, uh, it, it's, it's a bunch of single family units. Now, granted, there, there are a lot of multifamily in there, but these are single family residences. So, uh, just thought that was an interesting, you know, when you step back and look at that, I hope I'm not alone in just going, hmm.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, would, would, yeah, would somebody explain to me what you're talking about? I don't, I don't understand where the R three is.
Well, if you look at the yellow in the middle, that's R one.
Okay, all right.
That's an R one, laid over homes that are eight hundred to twelve hundred square foot.
Is that same thing as this?
Right, that's, that's what you're looking at in your package. The, the white has been zoned R three, and those lots are single family lots. Okay, so the only place where there are apartments that have been built in there is where somebody's come in and replatted single family lots to create room for an apartment. And I, I look at that map, and I say, "That's, that's not city planning." That, that's, thi, this is, one of the reasons why we're getting ready to have the discussion about, um, five B, is, is the need for us as a community to recognize that there are, there are, um, there, there's a relationship between R one, R two, and R three. And part of what I think the friction that, that's been created by this whole issue is the need for us to, to look at that and say, you know, "How, how does this really work?" Because this does not work, I, I think, because of what we're, what we're seeing and what we're talking about. And so we, we need to, um, just kind of take that into consideration. So I just wanted to have a hmm moment, I guess. All right, so with that, then we'll, we'll move to item B on the agenda. Uh, five B, which is to consider approval of ordinance twenty fifteen zero four, amending the following sections to the zoning ordinance, and that's five one, five two, five three, five four, five five, five six, six three, and six seven, to deal with, uh, residential zoning. And with that, I'll turn it, uh, the floor back over to Ms. Miller for a staff presentation.
Well, you, you tabled this, of course, at the last meeting and hope for some better input. We did have the citizen forum last Thursday and got some good input from citizens. And, um, you know, previously, the P and Z, um, had met in March to recommend that only the R two and R three districts, uh, have the minimum house size removed from it. Now, we had to caption the whole thing, every district, because of the potential that you might take a different route from the P and Z. So that's why everything is captioned here. So, uh, I've, I've listed some, some criteria here in each of these districts. The RE, RE district, the minimum house size, et cetera, et cetera. Um, of course, members of the E Rath County Builders Association had spoke to the P and Z about this, asking, uh, that the restrictions be lifted so that they had, could have more flexibility in the, in the zoning, I mean, in the building of, of houses, uh, for workforce. And, you know, I've, I've told you several times that there is many cities that do not have restrictions on sizes of structures as do, and have listed some of those for you. San Marcos, Angleton, Austin, Mineral Wells, Sweetwater, on and on, uh, that do not require any kind of minimum size for structures. So, you know, the, the ordinance has all the detail to it. Just would, if you have any other questions, we've kind of talked this, uh, a lot, talked about it a lot. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer those. But, you know, ma, Mayor and I, several people have talked about this other zoning district, which is underutilized here, the one point five, which could be an alternative, uh, to what we're trying to look at right now. The one point five only has the one thousand square foot minimum house size. And there's only one place in town. It hasn't been utilized at all. And this, this area that, um, the mayor is pointing out on this other zoning case would be a perfect, uh, you know, the perfect, uh, one point five. Whoops, let me go the other way. See, this, this area, the, the yellow area, that could be a perfect one point five area for rezoning. And there's many, many areas in town that I think could be the one point five. So this is something the staff will be analyzing and bringing back to the P and Z for, uh, a report. I think it's, it's just an underutilized zoning district that now, now that we're talking about this, has the potential to be utilized, since it's only a thousand square foot. And we could comprehensively rezon large areas like this, perhaps, to the one point five.
Okay, thank you, and, and with that, before we get into discussion among the council, I, I need to entertain a, a motion to, to, uh, remove this from the table, uh, if we're going to continue from this point. So I'll do that at this time.
Mayor, I move to take from the table the motion to amend the zoning ordinance. I believe the motion was last time made to amend zoning ordinance, removing the square footage restrictions from R two and R three only.
All right.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by, um, Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to, uh, remove from the table the motion, uh, that was before the council, and that was to remove the restrictions from R two and R three. So we'll, uh, it's not required discussion, so we'll just proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, so that motion carries, removes from the table the, uh, the motion. And so before the council right now is a motion to, um, accept the P and Z recommend, recommendation, uh, for, um, R two and R three, uh, restrictions being, being, uh, removed. And I think the council has a copy, uh, that was handed out of what the ordinance, um, would, would look like with, with that in place, which is section five point five and five point six.
Mayor, can I get some clarification? Judy, um, P and Z's recommendation, is that to remove the, uh, minimum, uh, building requirements in both these, in R two and R three? Does that apply to single family homes only, or was the recommendation for all categories in each?
Only single family. That's all we're dealing with here. That's all the Builders Association ever wanted to start out with, was a single family unit. So this only deals with single family. We don't need any changes, I don't think, to the other.
Yes, the Plan, Planning and Zoning, uh, recommendation was to remove the minimum area for, uh, which would be with what the council's looking at now, uh, subparagraph A to sections five point five and five point six, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But I don't think that's the way the motion was made, Mayor.
It's not the way the motion was made. The motion was, was to remove A and B, uh...
In both categories?
In both categories.
Unless my memory's faulty.
No, that's, that's, that's correct, and that's, that's the motion that's before the, the council right now.
So the, the, the P and Z, uh, their recommendation was basically what's in this document, removing the limitations in A and B, is that right?
It was only single family, only single family.
So only A.
Okay. So we're not, we're...
So what this, what this ordinance reflects, I believe, is, is the way the motion is before the council right now.
But that isn't what's pa, was passed by the P and Z, or is...
Yes, it's single family only. Single family only.
Well, this has two family in, in this document.
I know. That's not their, that's not their motion.
Okay. All right, so the motion is, is like this, except we're striking out the B?
No, let me, let me clarify. The, the motion that was made last month included what, what, what we see before us, which is A and B.
Okay.
Okay, so it, it incorporated, uh, or added the, the B to that.
Okay.
And so we, we need to, um, we need to discuss that, that motion and, um, act upon it.
Mr. Mayor, let, let me, let me see if I'm clear about this. P and Z, uh, just, and I think you've stated this three or four times, just recommended changing the single family, uh, requirements in, uh, R two and R three.
There was never, ever a discussion on anything but single family.
Then, uh, if that's correct, uh, this motion that's on the table now will have to be, and we get, I did, I guess we got a second at the last meeting. And it will have to be considered in two different sections, because, uh, A, or the single family part of it, was approved by P and Z and recommended, but there was no recommendation on, on the, uh, other part of the motion. That part of the motion will, will require a supermajority, three quarter, three quarters vote. The first part can be dealt with with a majority vote.
So it's two different ordinances here?
Yes, so you're saying that P and Z didn't vote on B in either one of them?
They didn't recommend anything. It's what Ms. Miller's telling me.
It's never discussed.
But we can just, we can just do it, even though they didn't even...
You can do it, but it's got, you can do that part of it, but it's going to take a three quarters majority. The first part...
Just like, like the P and Z did with...
Mayor, may I, I move to... Move to amend the main motion by striking out, uh, the multifamily parts of section five point five and five point six, and of course, only include the single family parts.
There is a second?
Second, second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Wagner, to amend the main motion by deleting the, uh, subparagraph B from section five five and five six. Any discussion?
I just had a question.
Okay.
The B part that is written here, is that what the original ordinance states, the square footage?
Well, the ordinance, it lists in any...
Yes, it is.
Yes.
The, the Bs there are the way it is now.
So, with, passing this as it is doesn't actually change anything on the Bs? Because the Bs are just copied over from the prior ordinance.
If you approve this motion, we won't even be considering that.
Okay.
Good question, Chair. All right, so what the, what the amendment does is it, it aligns our motion with P and Z's recommendation.
Right, right.
So that will allow us to concentrate on just the issue, um, that they, that they brought forward. All right, so, uh, any further questions or discussion on the amendment? All right, then we'll, uh, proceed to, to vote. All those in favor?
On the amendment, or...
On the amendment.
Okay.
So we proceed to a vote on the, on the amendment, which is to remove, uh, subparagraph B from sections five five and five six from the main motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that motion carries, uh, so the main motion is amended now for us to consider section five five, subparagraph A, which is single family, uh, R two, a thousand square foot, and section five six, multifamily, R three, single family. multifamily, R3, single-family, which is 1,000 square foot as well. And the, again, that motion is in line with the P and Z recommendation, which is to remove that, so the new ordinance would, would have no minimum area listed in the ordinance. So, sub-paragraph A would go away.
Correct.
So, the new ordinance would just have one sub-paragraph, and that would address the multifamily in, in the R2 and R3. So, we'll open that for discussion. And I do have one citizen request I don't want to miss, allowing us to discuss. So, does any council members have any comments or questions before I call? This, how do you say this?
Cheryl Beauchamp.
Beauchamp.
Cheryl Feacham.
Feacham, okay.
And I actually, I'm going to have to change gears now, because y'all took care of what my chief interest in this meeting was, by taking the subsection B out.
Okay.
I live on West Long Street. I'm a resident of Stevensville. I moved here when I went to Charlton and decided to stay, because it's the most lovely town. So, I printed out a couple of zoning maps that I found on the Stevensville website, and one of them is regarding future use. And if you'll notice, West Long Street down here is zoned R1 in the future use map. But on our current zoning map, what West Long Street is, especially down near the park, is what I'm concerned with, because that's the area where I live, is zoned R3, which is multifamily. Now, that was a real concern for me when we were thinking about changing the zoning ordinances to allow fewer square footage and multifamily, because that means more units. More units means more traffic, more congestion in our streets. And if anybody's ever driven down West Long Street, you know, it's not a very wide street at all. And in fact, we have parking only on one side of our road, and it causes traffic jams, and it can be actually dangerous trying to pass other cars at certain parts of the day. So, I thought that the, the zoning that we were talking about in R2 would really impact my neighborhood, and not for the best, especially since in the summer months, in the spring months, and in the fall months, we have an enormous amount of foot traffic on West Long Street going to the park, and we have a school right there, too, that has foot traffic. So, very worried, because there are no continuous sidewalks. The pedestrians and bike riders are required to ride or walk in the street in some instances, or walk through people's yards. And this should be a concern for everyone, because it's a safety issue. And if we were allowed to increase the traffic on our streets by lowering the square footage requirements and putting more units in there, then that would increase traffic on our streets, of course, and, and also, it would impact our beautiful tree-lined boulevards down there. And we'd be replacing it with ISORs of parking lots and trash cans, and I just don't think that would be a good thing for any resident. Plus, if you'll notice, on our map here, these white R3 areas on our map are, a lot of them are more modest homes. There, there's not a lot of apartment complexes in there. They're mostly single-family, lower socioeconomic impact in that area, and I feel like that it's kind of being targeted, in a way. And we just want you to know that those of us that live in those neighborhoods, we're proud of our homes. We're proud of our neighborhoods. They may not be the most expensive houses in Stevensville, but we love them, and we would really like to see Stevensville keep that in mind when they're considering the zoning ordinances. With regard to the R1.5-zoned areas, I think that's a really good idea for talking about some of these smaller square-footage homes under 1,000 feet. I don't think we need to tear down our existing structures to have a more economical option for people who are looking for a starter home. And I think that we could look at new development, or, or going to some of our R1.5-zoned areas. And lastly, I would ask that the council remember that our city is more than lines on a paper map. Our, this map, it represents families, homes, memories, traditions. And I would ask that they, you preserve what exists now, and not allow, you know, changes being made to our neighborhoods in the name of progress, when there are alternatives or investigation that needs to be done. At the very least, which you've done, you've tabled this for further discussion. I appreciate your time and all of your efforts on behalf of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the speech?
I have a couple of questions for Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you say the zoning along West Long Street is R1?
It's R3.
R3, okay. In a two-block radius of your house on West Long Street, are there any tracks big enough to build apartments on?
Yes. If they were, they're, I believe that they're owned by private citizens, but yes, eventually, I think that there could be. There's large tracks planned out beside the park.
Okay, so it'd be behind existing homes that are on the south side of Long Street?
Yes, they would be toward, up towards the loop. There, there's large tracks to find there.
It's R3 from Long Street to the loop, all that strip from?
Here we are here.
Alexander Road to Graham.
This is Long Street, this little line there right here. This is the loop down here. This is the park. All of this is R3, with the exception of this R1 area right here. Can I answer your question?
Are there other streets that can be tributaries into that area? For instance, Dublin counts, Mesquite, Alexander Road?
Alexander Road, for sure.
Right.
We have some other smaller roads that come across here that are, that there's a few residential homes on. But the main road, I think, access would be from Alexander Highway.
Okay, so, we're not assuming that if that is built up in apartments in the future, that they would be on Long Street coming in and out?
Well, we wouldn't assume now that people would be taking as, as much traffic on Long Street as there is, but for some reason, it's become a thoroughfare for people avoiding Washington Street. So, we have a lot of traffic due to that. And of course, when we were having the renovations over at Central, it was a nightmare on our street. You couldn't even get out of your driveway, because we had so much traffic backed up, which has been alleviated, and it's much better, and the school's wonderful, so that's not really an issue. But I do believe that we have more traffic than ever on our street, and I'm just worried about it increasing. And especially if we added more apartment units or duplexes, and we have a lot more people traveling that street up and down, I think that would be terribly detrimental to the people who live in that neighborhood, not to mention the people who don't live in the neighborhood that just use the, the park facilities. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. I just think we might need to study this whole zoning deal. It sounds like we're doing some stuff, hodgepodge, and we might have to study the big picture, you know?
I certainly appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing your concerns.
I have a question for Randy Thomas, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Randy, if, if we approve the, the, what P and Z did here on single-family dwellings, how does that relate to what she was just saying? She's talking about apartments that are already zoned R3, and we're talking about single-family, pretty much rehabs or tear down and new builds in these zoning sections.
Rusty, I'm not sure. I didn't think about that. And I might get it down here in just a little bit, but take this second.
Well, let me make one comment that I think may, may clarify or may confuse, but it, it deals with density, because the lots right now, if, if we could go back to the map that shows the whole R3 area, the way the, the neighborhoods are planted right now, it, it may be zoned R3, but you can't build a multifamily on a small R3 lot unless you replat it to make it big, big enough. And you'd have to?
Yep, so number big enough.
So, right, right. So, the, the, by not changing R2 or R3, we're not affecting any, anything that, that may have or may not have been taking place in that area. There, there's no change.
Right.
So, what we're, what we're actually considering is, for any of those lots where you can see a line and there's a lot, if there's a single-family house there now, then it can either be renovated as is, or if it's torn down, it can be rebuilt at, at any size that the market would, would demand it to be built.
Correct.
So, we're not changing the, the footprint of that area, but, but we're saying that, that that house could be rebuilt at any size. That, that's what, that's what this motion puts before the council.
That's what I needed to hear.
Okay.
Mayor, I think after, after listening to the discussion at P and Z and at the public forum the other night, there's still a lot of our citizens that are uncomfortable with this, because if you look at that mail, that encompasses a large area in the city, and, and you're dramatically changing what we have had established for a number of years. I don't know that that's necessarily bad, but I know that people are uncomfortable with change sometimes. I, I still, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to attack this problem. At P and Z, there was discussion about looking at the average size of residences in a specific area, and trying to come up with a formula that would allow you to replace an existing structure with a new structure of similar size to those in, in a given area. I don't know, that would take staff a significant amount of work to develop something like that and then enforce it, but that would certainly alleviate some of the fears of some of the citizens who live in these very areas that we're talking about. We have eliminated one bone of contention, I believe, by eliminating the R1 district. However, the R2 and R3 still carry a significant number of houses and lots and area inside the city. And I'm, I'm hesitant to change that without doing a little more research and without coming up with another plan that might be more palatable to the owners of the adjoining properties and those builders that are in the business to make a profit.
Perhaps a lessening of the restrictions, this house size, not eliminating it, but lessening it?
Well, Mr. Nix, I, I, and I don't know, does anyone in the council have a reaction to Mr. Nix's statement?
Just that I kind of agree with him.
Yeah. What? Could you repeat that? Just so he kind of agrees with you. Well, well, let me say this, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to dampen any discussion among the council, but I don't think we have a house size problem. I think we've got an R.1.5 problem. I, I think that, because I've heard builders say that, and, and, you know, it's interesting, everybody's concerned that there's going to be a bunch of multifamily units built by builders, but what I've heard from builders is, I don't want to build a single-family, because I'm concerned somebody may come back and build a multifamily next to me. And so, what we've got is gridlock. And what, what's our goal? Let's, let's don't lose sight of that. Our goal is, I think, from what I've heard in Mr. Nix's, the discussion you've had, is to, is to create an opportunity for these older homes to be redeveloped, and for new starter homes to be built.
Portable housing.
And, and our, and our problem is that, that our zoning in this large area creates a friction, so that nobody knows who's going to go first. And so, nobody's doing anything, except for those that have rezoned to do multifamily. And then, outside of this area, we have very little to none of our areas that are zoned R1.5. And that's an issue, because we don't have any subdivisions that are providing affordable homes for people that are trying to start families in our community. And so, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, Mr. Wagner's agreement with Mr. Nix, I think, is a reflection of, you know, maybe what we need to do here is, is not change square footages right now, but take a hard look at where can we, as a community, provide R1.5 as a way to break this gridlock and, and move forward with some, some affordable renovations in this, in the heart of our community, and then some new starter homes on the perif, you know, the peripheral of our, throughout our community.
The R1.5, as you know, allows a smaller home.
Right, 1,000 square feet?
But it, but the same size as the R2 and R3.
Right.
However, it eliminates the possibility of that quad or duplex or whatever being across the street, or in your backyard, or, or wherever, that you're uncomfortable with.
Right, right.
That's a good idea.
Now, Judy, what would it entail for us to look at a specific area? And we obviously can't look at that whole area, but to look at a specific area with, in mind, trying to determine if that is a, a good candidate for potential rezoning to the R1.5, and, and then follow through with that? Are we talking about an extremely long process?
No, it's not. It, it doesn't take a lot of analysis. In fact, staff has, has already identified two or three different pockets in town that are very good candidates for the 1.5. And, you know, I don't know if you want to do it at a workshop session, you know, or just bring back a report that staff maybe has, has done. Probably take us, not next month, but maybe the following month, to come back with some good recommendations for you on the 1.5 in the areas.
A lot of owners would have to agree to the rezoning.
Of course, of course.
And I would greatly appreciate having P and Z's input on this also.
Well, they're having a workshop this month. Their regular meeting is going to be workshop. We're going to discuss all this.
Okay, good, good.
Mayor? Ms. Zachary, go ahead.
But we still, even with the R1.5, though, we're still left with the issue of some of the little tiny houses that are only 850 or 70 square feet?
Sure.
That are falling down in certain places?
Yeah.
Near me, as well as others. But, but not being able to be replaced with the same footprint house. Is that something that could be, is there a sub-paragraph that can be added to the R1.5 zoning that allows, if there was an existing structure of that square footage, to be replaced with an existing, same footprint?
That would fall under a board of adjustment, one of the categories that the board of adjustment has authority over. And to replace with, so, maybe I could bring some information back to you on that, how, if that were to occur, how, what would be the avenue of appeal for that?
Okay.
Because that's a potential, you know? We don't see it every day, but we do see it a lot during the month, so.
So, has, has anyone, has anyone heard from builders in the community of whether or not they would build back an 800-square-foot home?
No, well, we have. We actually have, and, and they say that what they're looking for is somewhere between 1,000 or 1,200.
Right. So, Sherry, I think your scenario, if there's an 800-square-foot house out there, it appears that, that the dollars will work for that 800-square-foot house to be torn down, and they build back a 1,000-square-foot house.
Right.
But what the money won't support is building a 1,500-square-foot house.
Right. But you might, well, like I said, it's just an individual case. I'm thinking more in terms of like a, an older person who might, you know, whose kids maybe get together, they don't want to leave town, might, well, help them out, but.
You'll be careful.
Yeah.
Well, I am an older person, aren't I? And I live in an 850-square-foot house.
Did you hear Judy's comment?
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. I think that could be handled through a board of adjustment case.
Through a board of adjustments, okay.
Not a variance. It's not a variance, but it's a?
Right.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Swin?
And I, I understand where we're going with this, I believe, or I could be confused, but we're looking at multifamily, we're looking at R3, and there's going to be folks who have purchased, as, I'm talking about the person who's lived there for the last 50 years, but there are people going to have purchased properties like this anticipating it being a commercial area, I mean, or multifamily area. So, I think we have to be cognizant also of, it's going to take some people's value down when you go back to single-family with a R1.5, when, in other words, like this gentleman that came tonight, says, I want to put quadruplexes or townhomes in there or something. So, I think there's, there's a balancing act there we have to deal with, and the hodgepodge that you prefer to is what our problem is. But people, as hodgepodge as it is, and some of it's been caused by this council, not this particular council, but by allowing these things to happen, what we, what people have done is taken that plan and say, okay, I'm going to buy this piece of property anticipating someday doing something, we come back and change it again, well, we may have just messed them up as well. So, I just think we need to keep, it's a bigger picture than just looking at the size of a plan, I think.
Right. I've got a hand over here in the? I've got a hand over here in the.
I'm just curious, I mean, I don't want to get involved in it, but I'm just curious if builders are wanting to build back a thousand or twelve hundred square foot house. Then what's the, why, why are we doing this in R two and R three? Because what can you build in R two and R three right now?
Thousand square feet. Thousand square feet.
So that's why I'm, I'm a little confused on it. If that's what they're wanting, then why are they wanting to do this? And I'm for the builders, so I don't want to upset any builder, but, I mean, I just feel like that may not be the case because if it takes them, I mean, they can do that, correct?
Right, right. So I, I, I think the issue, as, as I'm hearing us talk about it, if I could just summarize, is that we actually could do nothing to the ordinances at all at this time and task staff and P and Z to go back and look at where can we look at some, uh, community input to create some one point five areas in our community. Uh, is, is really, I think, where we're at.
And Mr. Saven's points are valid points.
Right.
Because some of that property's been purchased in anticipation of doing some development at some point. And I, I think we need to be aware of that. But at the same time, we need to be aware of the, the single family residents who have lived there for a number of years that, that expect our consideration also, I believe.
Right, and, and that takes into account, I believe, the comment that, that was made about those, we may be looking at lines, but there's actually families that live in this area. And so how do you, how do you, I'll use the word protect, the integrity of neighborhoods that have existed for over a century to multifamily development? And where do you, where do you promote multifamily development in an orderly fashion to support Tarleton and, and other multifamily needs? And I, I think what we're, what we're experiencing right now is, is, um, you know, a great discussion about that. And I think it will allow us.
Places like Houston that have no requirements. You build an apartment complex right next to a two million dollar house, there is no zoning requirement. So just, just need restrictions. It just did restrictions, that's right.
Yeah.
But these areas already, the, uh, R two and R three already do, and they've existed for a long time, have a multifamily component to those ordinances.
It's the footprint.
Yeah, so we are, are, and which we were not going to change, apparently, or P and Z did not recommend a change on that.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess the, Doug's point is very valid that somebody has bought a bigger lot with the idea of putting a, a duplex on it or a quad.
Did, did somebody say that if the city wants to change the zoning, that we've got to have permission of the people that own the property?
No, you can initiate, you can initiate it. If council can initiate it, yes, we have to notify everybody.
Oh, well, we don't, we don't need their permission, though?
No.
Okay.
You need their permission to change the zoning.
You bet.
You do not?
You can't, you can't rezonate some of those properties without their permission.
Well, without notification.
I think the key word here is, is input versus approval, but, but that's an issue for another discussion. I, I don't want to.
Okay.
Let's, let's talk about that later.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have another question for Mr. Thomas. I'm keeping you busy tonight.
I need your.
What's the best way to back out of the motion and second on the table?
Can withdraw it. Well, I think you better go ahead and vote on it.
Go ahead and vote on it?
Yes.
That's his suggestion, Mayor.
Okay. So what?
We voted on the amendment, now we have the main, the main motion to, to vote on, which it sounds like everybody's wanting to back away from at this point.
Right. Okay, so.
I can't remember who made the motion and seconded it. I can on the amendment, but I can on the main motion.
Well, that was done last month, wasn't it?
Right, right.
But, uh, we need, we need to vote on it. I don't know who you might be.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Pendleton and seconded by Ms. Zachary to amend only R two and R three districts. So that's, that's the motion that's before, uh, the council right now, is, is that. So we'll, um, so a, a vote of, uh, an affirmative vote here would be to adopt the P and Z recommendation with the motion that's on the floor. Okay?
Which is just the A.
Which is just the A. Okay. Is everybody clear on, on what we're voting on? Just want to make sure. Okay, so we're, so we'll proceed to vote then. All, all those in favor?
Are we, are we through discussion yet?
Yeah, yeah. Well, unless you're.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, I intend to vote against it, not because I'm particularly against it. I just think we need to re-study all this stuff, so that's all I got to say. It's kind of like a motion to a table again, but that's what it's meant to be.
Now, if, if we turn this down tonight, does P and Z have to pass it again to bring it back to us?
Certainly.
And then do?
Of course.
So this puts us all the way back to P and Z.
Right.
Which is fine, you know, they're going to discuss it, we're going to have a workshop, go to discuss it again.
And we'll come back.
Sure.
Okay.
World won't come to an end.
That's right.
Or world won't come to an end.
Okay, so all those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, the noes have it, the, uh, ordinance is, uh, disapproved and we'll send that back to planning and zoning. All right. Great discussion. Thank you for the input. Okay, Pendleton's going to a baseball game, so. Do I? Yeah. Okay, before, before we leave this, I just want to thank everybody for your input and, and your willingness to come and talk about this issue, the great work with planning and zoning and staff. And, uh, you know, I think that this is recognition within the community that this is something that we all want to work on, is a clear signal there. So we just need to continue to, to stick with this and, and try to come up with some solutions that, that help us achieve the goal. And the goal is to, to be able to provide for the rejuvenation of some of the older areas of town and then provide, uh, new affordable housing in, in some newer sections of town as well in a way that is comparable to, uh, to land uses in that area. All right, with that, then we'll proceed to item C on the agenda, which is, uh, open a, a public hearing to consider the request from Austin and Brooke Harris to rezone from R one, single family to R three, multifamily, eight point five one seven acres of land in the Henry Pearson survey. And turn it over for, to Judy for staff presentation on this issue.
All righty. This is kind of the area map. Uh, the property is located right there. Eight acres, um, subdivision that's right there is a manufactured house subdivision. You talk about, uh, hodgepodge of zoning. Uh, it came quite clear, when this is zoned industrial, the Boski Retail Center is zoned industrial? And all this in here is industrial? Totally, totally anomaly. I, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, this is one of the, the things that P and Z is going to be looking at to rezone. A lot of this area, it's not appropriate zoning at all. But, that being said, there is apartment complex here. Uh, this is vacant land, uh, eight acres. Uh, Brooke Harris is here this evening to present the case. Um, aerial, this is a closer map with a one to two hundred foot, uh, circle that requires notification within that two hundred feet. Um, let's see, I didn't notify twenty-two letters were noticed. Um, didn't hear from anybody, um, of course, newspaper publication as well. You can see that, that, uh, the area, this manufactured house subdivision here has the access off of, eventually off of, uh, Washington Street that has the, the, the street coming down here and then it just stops right there. That's part of that subdivision. So this would be the access into this eight acres. And there's a small stream that runs through here. Uh, I'm getting another map. There's the one to two hundred map with the land uses, single family now. Uh, the request is to go to R three. Uh, there's just, you know, that, again, purple area over there that's the Boski, that's, that's totally not appropriate for that area. Um, that's a future land use map which actually shows, uh, that area to, to be a manufactured house subdivision. Not, not, not good. Uh, so, uh, just, that, it is what it is. That's, that's something, I mean, that's the, uh, compromise of plan. Um, so in considering this, I made note to you, P and Z has recommended approval of this rezoning request, uh, to the council. Uh, Brooke and Austin Harris are the owners. Um, they want to have it rezoned to R three. Not really sure. I'll let them give their, or Brooke give her testimony for why they want to rezone it. Did not hear from any of the property owners in the area. Um, staff is, is really not in favor of this request and recommends that it remain R one. Uh, it should be a good location for a subdivision of affordable housing. Uh, however, it's, it's doubtful the property would be developed in single family with the, the fifteen hundred square foot minimum that we have now. So that being said, you know, uh, if, if we did a one point five perhaps in that area, that would be really a good, uh, zoning for this area, the one point five. Uh, so, any questions from the council?
Any questions for Ms. Sving?
I've been back there several times. There's actually an arena back there, isn't, in that, back in that direction. That slopes back towards, it slopes back towards the, there, to the railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that serviced right now by sewer, Nick?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no service issues back in that area?
Yeah. See, there, there's the water sewer map right there.
It's the old lines, but it, it has capacity.
Yeah.
If she puts multifamily in there, it's going to have the capacity to do that. So if that's the, if we, if she comes in and puts in apartments, like the Boski River Apartments up north, I guess that's what they're still called, up north of that, if it puts in there and the capacity isn't capable of being handled by our lines, you, we deny their application?
Well.
Or do we have to upgrade the service?
You have, well, they have to upgrade the service.
Well, but the problem, part of the problem is where it's not just the service right there, it's all the way back. It's one of those, what do you call, what do we call them, the zones or the basins? It's, we have a problem with it.
To be clear, I see no issues with the sewer service.
Okay, that's all I need to know then.
Okay, any other questions for Judy?
This, this, this area, the eight acres, could, could sustain, you know, depending on the site plan, what they put in it, it's, could sustain two hundred units.
Sustain what?
Two hundred units.
Okay.
In, in your opinion, this would be a good area to consider for the R one point five perhaps?
Yeah.
Does it carry a smaller lot size also?
Somewhat smaller. It's seventy-five hundred for R one, this is a six thousand, one point five.
One point five with a smaller footprint of a house also.
Correct, correct.
Do you have the ability to back off from that, so it's back, you know, back up, look at some of the bigger area around it?
Kind of, kind of.
I understand the industrial doesn't make sense with Boski River, but that's
Yeah.
probably because of what was behind us in ten, the industrial park at one point, because of the, because of the railroad. But, so up north of, all that red is, I guess, I'm calling it, you have to tell me.
It's green.
Green, okay, there you go.
Green.
Everybody who laughs gets a lawsuit for discrimination. Okay. The issue here is.
Just add a six.
There you go. So what, that is, all of it again?
R, retail, commercial.
Retail, commercial. And the white is the Boski River multifamily, it's R three, right there.
Right, that, that is, that was apartment to R three.
And then down below it, down on the Bob White where that ends down there is R.
One.
One right now.
Right.
So if we're going to do that, then we'd be turning, if we, if we're wanting to keep it R one, it's kind of out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
Everything around it's either industrial or multifamily right now.
Exactly, doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
Mm-mm.
So I'm, I'm going to, my intention is to go with the request for the rezoning. Because it seems to fit then, it seems to fit what else is there. I mean, the, the, the trailer par, um, the mobile home par, excuse me, doesn't seem to fit well, but I know why it was put out there, because I was on the edge of town at the time, so.
Okay.
It has sewer service. To me, it kind of seems to fit the neighborhood to some degree, so I, I think I'll wait.
All right, well, let me move on at this time then, for anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the, uh, request.
Great, my husband, I am Brooke Harris and my, um, address is thirty-eight forty County Road, two ninety-nine Dublin. Um, I have my phone, excuse me, because my husband is working, so he sent some notes for me to represent us. Um, basically, we purchased this property because of its proximity to the Boski River Apartments um, in hopes, in full knowledge that we knew it was residential R one property, but, um, wanting to get it rezoned R three. Um, our plans are to, in the next three years, either build quadplexes or apartments, um, depending on kind of where we are when we get there. Um, as you can see, with the future planning and with the current planning, um, we feel like it's a good fit for our town. Um, Tarleton is growing and we need places for people to stay. Um, I feel like it's a good fit for the location and proximity to other apartments. Um, basically, we just would appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them if that's second.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Harris?
If you only get R one, if it doesn't get changed, how many units could we, could she put on that same property about?
How many, how?
Yes, if it went, if we went to R one five, for example, if that's what it turns out to be. It's three hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet, so with setbacks and streets and whatever, what's it going to be, twenty units?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five? And how many units do you think you could have put on the piece of property now with the quadplex or, maybe all even?
Uh, no, I mean, we, we're kind of waiting until we get approved before we spend any more money on.
She had to come back with a replat. This is just zoning and had to come back with a replat.
Right, I mean, from what I understand, this is just letting us know about the zoning. I mean, any planning for building, we obviously would have to go through that process at that time.
So you could potentially come back with single families or multifamily? You just don't know yet.
Well, our, we want to do either quadplexes or apartments. I mean, that is, that is the goal.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in, in favor? Or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, then I'll, at this time, close the public hearing and I'll consider a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the rezoning request as, uh, set forth on page fifteen of our agenda packet.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Sven to, uh, consider approving the rezone from R one to R three, uh, as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Could, could I ask Judy another question, please?
Certainly.
I, I find it interesting that even though P and Z recommends this, staff does not. And staff's recommendation for the one point five, which we've discussed already, seems to me to be a more logical use for this property, although it cuts down the number of structures and the number of residences, it also cuts down the, the amount of traffic that comes and goes through there on what, and I've been back there and those streets are narrow and they're congested already.
Correct.
And I, I believe that putting apartments, uh, or quads or, or any other multifamily structure back there is going to create more problems instead of alleviate those problems.
It could.
It may not be as financially rewarding to develop it that way, but I think it would be better for the area and certainly better for the traffic. And, and is that, is the traffic concern a part of the reason that the staff is recommending that it?
Certainly, yes, oh, certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What kind of street is that? Is the, is not Bob, is it, it is Bob White all the way up to the highway?
It's Bob White, it's, uh.
It's Boski River? It's Boski River?
Well, Boski, does that, Boski comes down here.
They're putting Sonic in the shopping center?
Yeah.
Is that a minor collect, is that a collector's street?
Not really.
Well, it, it's, it's sixty feet wide, isn't it?
No.
It's, it's a, it is, it is a set, I mean, that's, that's the same size as most of our collector's streets.
Boski?
Boski, yes, I believe it is.
It's a wide street.
Yeah, I believe it's a collector's street. Bob White may be our problem for access, egress, in and out.
Mm-hmm.
But the Boski, I believe, I think the Boski is a collector's street. I believe it, you don't, it's only had it for six months, I know.
Mayor?
Mr. Hogan.
Can someone help me understand why you would, next to the Boski River Center, you already have apartments and you have a trailer park, why another apartment complex would not be? To me, that just doesn't, doesn't make sense. Why wouldn't you want to put another apartment? It's walkable, you can walk right to the Boski River Center, eat, go to the movies, walk back to your apartment. You already got the other apartments there.
Mayor, I agree.
But I'm not the, you know, I'm no genius when it comes to zoning, so maybe there's just something, I don't know.
I agree with Mr. Hogan, uh, Mayor. Uh, you can put that in twenty or twenty-five lots for residential houses. Uh, how many people, you know, want their backyard to join in a railroad track? Not many.
I wouldn't want to build a house. I wouldn't want to build a house right next to the Boski River Center in a trailer park.
Wait a minute.
But, just me.
All right, well, why don't we proceed to vote then, um, with that, with the motion before us is to approve the, the request from R one to R three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, that motion carries as presented. And approving ordinance twenty fifteen, what is it Cindy? Oh four, thank you. All right, the last item on the planning and zoning agenda is to consider a request to replat lots three and four and part of lot five, lot two, Traywick Edition, Spring Meadow Court. R one, single family residential district, so at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider this approval request and ask Judy to give us the staff presentation.
Thanks, Mayor, um, this is a, a vicinity map locating the replat, uh, in the northeast part of the city. This is hard to see, you've got it in your, again, a little hard to see with the lines on here, but, uh, this is a replat, a, a, a public hearing replat because it is zoned single family or duplexed, single family here in the last five years, and so you have to have a public hearing and notify people within the two hundred feet of the replat. Shows the flood plain there, and this is, uh, one to two hundred of the duplication and how the subdivision will be laid out, uh, the replat. The P and Z did recommend approval as submitted, um, we sent out, um, let's see, how many, twenty-two letters to affected property owners within the two hundred feet. Notified in the, in the newspaper, have not heard from anyone, uh, from those letters. Construction drawings have been submitted, um, for the Spring Meadow cul-de-sac, um, and so that was back in January. So, building permits will not be issued until the developer has completed, uh, the construction drawings, and those are very, very close at this point. So, um, everything is, is pretty much in order, meet subdivision regulations and ready for approval.
Okay, any questions for Judy? All right, anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the request? All right, seeing none, then I'll see if anyone wishes to come and, and speak, uh, in opposition. Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve the replat request of lots three and four and part of lot five, lot two, Traywick Edition.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Hogan to approve the request, uh, to replat lots three and four and part of lot, lot five, lot two, Traywick Edition. Any discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, that motion carries as presented. All right, Judy, thank you very much, and that concludes the planning and zoning section of the, uh, the meeting. And we'll move on to, uh, item six, and I'll, uh, we'll consider an ordinance for budget amendments for the year, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I will say that he'd serve as a resource if we need him. Basically, what we're doing here is there are some expenditures that we have, uh, that the staff have made and plan to make during the next fiscal, rest of the fiscal year totaling seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We discussed this in committee, it was unanimous that we make the, ring the recommendation council that we approve, amend the budget, and you'll see an amendment, or a, excuse me, an ordinance on the back page to states that. If any questions, Walter Behere would be happy to explain some of the specifics, it's things such as computers, uh, we have a council issue, excuse me, a legal issue that we had some council on, it costs some extra dollars, etc. But all the items are listed here and it, there's no amendment to extra expended, I mean, excuse me, the money is all there, I guess, is the point to make.
You're not raising taxes?
Uh, no, sir.
No, Mr. McDannell.
As a matter of fact, now that you mentioned that, one of the things I'd like to point out is there's been lots of talk about
Come on, Rose.
How we have certain expenses that we don't have the ability to do, a certain proposition is coming up because of that. Well, here's an example where we've added several hundred thousand dollars in expenses and had the revenue to do so without having to raise taxes.
Thank you.
All right, and, and I'll just, uh, point out for, uh, for those watching here tonight, and, and the, the council has had a work session on this where Walter led us line by line through this with the finance committee, so this isn't the first time we've seen this, we, we spent, uh, almost two hours, uh, going through this line by line, a lot of, uh, review and discussion about it, so, um, if there's no further discussion, then I'll consider a motion.
I'm moved, Mayor, I'm moved that we, it's gonna be ordinance twenty fifteen, what?
Zero five.
Zero five, that we amend the budget as presented by, by staff and committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by, Mr. Spivey, seconded by Ms. Zachary to approve ordinance twenty fifteen zero five, providing for the budget amendments for the remainder of the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty fifteen, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? All right, that motion carries, approving ordinance twenty fifteen zero five, Walter, thank you for the great work on that, as well as the finance committee.
Okay, Alan.
All right, but, all right, next item on the agenda is to consider a right-of-way services agreement, uh, for the regional airport project, and I'll, uh, ask Mr. Jeremy Allen to give us a presentation on that.
Honorable mayor, members of council, I also have Mr. Hardy Hampton, he's part of our, uh, airport advisory team, um, and it's pretty unanimous across the board, we're all excited about the possibilities of expansion with our airport, as we get a little bit closer, we're probably four or five months from our environmental study being completed. This agreement is, uh, with a land acquisition firm to help us, uh, with, uh, purchasing property, uh, around the airport, and it, so that's kind of what this agreement is for. If, I don't know if you guys looked through it, if you guys have questions with it, without going line by line and reading through it.
Any questions, Mr. Spivey?
I have a couple of questions. Prior to your coming to work for us, we discussed with the airport board a particular acquisition issue that may or may not be required by FAA, currently FAA says we have to have, which is on, I guess, the north side of the airport, and so y'all are gonna make sure we address that issue because it may not be required.
It actually has been brought up, the, the mayor has asked me that same question and I can, got it confirmed, um, the north side of the runway, basically, when the FAA, when the Tech Dot wrote this up for the FFA, FAA, sorry, the, um, there's two roads that are a problem, we have sixty-seven and then we have, uh, Highway two oh five. In part of the, the ride-up, in order to be able to not have to relocate both of those roads in order for the expansion, which be quite costly, we were gonna have to purchase or attempt to purchase the, the part of the runway on the, the, the property on the north side. So, we cannot be granted a waiver or it's not expected that we'd be granted a waiver without that property because of the two roads, and that was the agreement, that was the, the offset.
So, y'all haven't addressed it then?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and Mr. Spivey, uh, I, I'll just share with you that it was a, a concern that we were having to purchase that, that property, but what the FAA has shown is it's, it's kind of an overall risk mitigation strategy that's in place there, when you combine the road with facility, it all, right, right. So, the, the purchase is, is a necessary step in this when you consider the overall risk mitigation strategy, so I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, well, you're the one that brought it up, I mean, you've been in there before, you'd know better than us. The next question was, and we have, though we have not set it aside in a, what do we call it, where we have obligated funds, we have told the board, airport board, that we would support this project. And at the time, initially, when it came to us, we were talking about a half million dollars, and we at the meeting discussed it could be seven hundred and fifty or more, do you have any more idea what that might be?
That's pretty, that's pretty close to the number that we're looking at right now, the last number I got was from them, but a lot of that has to depend on land acquisition.
Cost of the asset.
So, it's a good thing to have a company like this that is, you know, experienced in doing that, hopefully be able to negotiate us a good rate.
I'm just wanna make that point because in the, in our budget discussions coming up in June, one of the things we'll be discussing is reserves that we have to set back, even though we're not doing an obligation in the sense that it's by law setting it back, that is some money that we've verbally obligated to the airport board that we've spent, so that's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just keep in mind.
And Jeremy, that, that money would go to a credit for our grant cost share, correct?
That's right, anything that, at this point, if we were to start a process with, with, uh, the land around the airport, um, anything that we purchased would go, would be, would be credited to, to the airport project, future airport project.
Well, when Walter and I talked about, we said that we'd be, go up as much as a million if we had to, so just, but FYI, this for the council, that'd be something.
Board, did you have a question?
Sounds like the city's gonna pay, whatever the deal is, we pay no more than ten percent.
Right.
Who, who pays the other ninety percent?
Tech Dot Aviation is our, they have, we have a grant with Tech Dot Aviation, a ninety-ten split, so seven million dollar project, we're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars, so, I mean, and, but, let's hope that's what it comes out to.
Yeah, I think if anybody wants to bring nine million dollars in here, we might do something, do that like.
Pretty good deal, huh?
All right, any other questions for Jeremy?
Yes, sir. Jeremy, if I remember right, part of our original agreement was for Tech Dot to do this property acquisition, and they have had a change in personnel and some other issues. Is, is this an experienced company, is this someone that Tech Dot recommended to us to do this in, in their place?
They, they came up, recommended through Tech Dot Aviation, even prior to that personnel change, they were even suggesting that maybe we go ahead and use them prior to the personnel change. Once the personnel changed, they said this is probably, at this point, best bet in order to keep it moving.
Mr. Nix, prior to, uh, Tech Dot assuming responsibility for, uh, negotiations of this property, this, this, the city had a contract with this company to, to try to acquire that property. And, uh, for some logistical reasons, Tech Dot had agreed to take it over, and now they've asked us to, to, to go back and, and handle that ourselves, so we're re-engaging the company that we had when all this began.
Okay, thank you.
So, so there's no real change in the contract vehicle, there's no real change in the cost, all we're doing is, is keeping the ball moving.
Exactly.
Right, okay. All right, yes, go ahead.
Just, I think just something that ought to be noted is that when our new administrator hired Jeremy for the position he is, one of his qualifications is, is pilot, so, I mean, he is very, I'm sad, I think it's a great thing he's leading this project.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point.
Well, I'm excited about it, and like I said, the airport advisory, uh, team, they're, they're super excited to keep it moving too, so.
Okay, all right, I'll consider a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the right-of-way services agreement with Contract Land Staff LLC.
It's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Nix to approve the right-of-way services agreement with Contract Land Staff, uh, as presented, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? All right, that motion carries as presented. Good, item eight on the agenda is to consider a memorandum of understanding with Tech Dot for, uh, US three seventy-seven business, and, uh, Pat would just ask you to give us, uh, an update on that.
Sure, the, uh, the, the background on this is that, uh, several months ago, the mayor and I met with Representative from Tech Dot, uh, Tarleton, and Representative Sheffield Staff to discuss the, uh, to discuss that corridor, that Business three seventy-seven, uh, and, and the expansion of that roadway and, and reconstruction of it. Initially, our, our initial discussions just centered on the, uh, on the S curve area right there around Washington and Lillian, uh, through subsequent discussion. We asked Tech Dot to, to put together an MOU, uh, actually going, uh, considering the, the, uh, rebuilding of Washington Street from two eighty-one, uh, initially to the South Loop. And, uh, was gonna be done in sections, and we've since gone back and asked them to add to that, to go from, uh, two eighty-one all the way to, uh, FM nine eighty-eight. What this MOU does is spell out each, uh, each entity's responsibilities in the agreement. We all agree that the planned development must be comprehensive, that addresses traffic flow and safety and other community needs. The, the first priority, as I mentioned, breaking this, uh, breaking Washington up into, into four separate projects, uh, Tech Dot and the city both recognize that the realignment of the, uh, S curve there at Lillian is, is the first priority, and, uh, so, other than that, this memorandum just spells out the responsibilities of each party and, uh, would ask for your approval.
Okay, one, one thing I'll add from the meeting, which I thought was, was excellent, by the way, we had, uh, representatives from Tarleton there, uh, talking with us to help us understand the, the land use as Tarleton fronts Washington, but in the meeting, Tech Dot committed to actually do this study for us, using their resources from two eighty-one to nine eighty-eight, so what we're doing here with this MOU is, is basically accepting their offer to do the study for us for two, for three seventy-seven, so it's, uh, it's a really good step in the right direction for us to have a comprehensive plan for, for that entire stretch. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hogan.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Stephenville and Texas Department of Transportation, outlined on page eighty-eight to eighty-nine.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Wagner, to approve the memorandum of understanding with Tech Dot for US Business three seventy-seven as, as outlined, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? All right, that motion carries, and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Mr. Spivey, seconded by Mr. Hogan, I believe I heard, was that right?
Ms. Zachary would like it, she can have it.
All right. To approve the consent agenda as presented, uh, any discussion?
Mayor, I just have, uh, one correction on page ninety-three of someone's last name, I don't want to slow down the process, uh, it's not Sherry King, it's Sherry Keen, E E N E.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll catch that, all right. So, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Okay, um, there is one item on here, I want to draw attention to everybody that's, that's in the room, the multi-purpose facility feasibility study. That is part of the ongoing effort between leadership Stephenville and the city of Stephenville to, to get an understanding of what uses there might be for a multi-purpose facility in our community. And this is a needs assessment to say what, what are the potential uses of a multi-purpose facility in our community, and the, this will give us some more insight, I think Jeremy will be bringing this to us in the future with some more updates on that, it's something for us to look forward to as a community. All right, with that, comments by the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, I've got several, uh, to echo your comments at the beginning of the meeting, I want to thank all the city staff, the directors and, and all their personnel who, uh, responded to the storms back on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth of April, uh, particularly on the twenty-fourth, which was a Friday, we started calling people back in that had, uh, already worked an entire shift. And they all came back in and went to work clearing streets and what have you, uh, Nick and, and Jeremy came up with their plan to, uh, uh, arrange for that drop-off of all the brush and trees and, uh, prelims and stuff, and, uh, and for the equipment that was gonna be necessary to get that done. So, there was, there was a lot of planning that, that went into that, but I just can't say enough about the job that all these directors and all the employees did. And I also want to thank Commissioner Joe Brown, Joe Brown provided some equipment and some people as well and assisted in this, in this project, so, uh, we appreciate that. A reminder that Saturday, May ninth, uh, is election day, uh, this time next week, we'll have two new council members, uh, you can vote from seven AM to seven PM over here at the Erath County Courthouse. The citizen budget requests need to be submitted this month, uh, the deadline for submission will be the city council meeting on June second, so if, uh, any of our citizens have something they, uh, a project, they would like seeing the budget, uh, they need to get that submitted to us. Saturday morning, beginning at 8:00 a.m., until it's gone, we'll be giving away the mulch down at City Park that was shredded up from the storm debris. So it's an opportunity for folks to come down, we'll have staff on hand. We will not be loading the mulch into bags, we simply would be there to assist with the traffic flow. We will have some equipment on hand for those who bring trucks, is that right, Nick? Trucks or trailers to load mulch into that, so come get all you want. Please.
Get all we have.
It's free.
Rice is right.
Splashville will open on Saturday, May the 23rd. First day, it'll be open from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And would just like to remind everybody that it's not too late to get the season pass special, which is unlimited visits for $75 per person. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 25th, in observance of Memorial Day, and there will be a Memorial Day ceremony on May 25th in the West End Cemetery at the Veterans Field of Honor at 9:00 a.m. Last thing I have is I would like to thank Mr. Hogan and Mr. Pendleton for their service. This is their, I guess, last official meeting. I, I would like to thank both of them and particularly for the support they've given me over the last several months as I moved into this role, Casey, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we'll start with Mr. Hogan, any comments?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sveen?
Since it is Casey's last time, I want everybody to know that this whole economic development discussion started with his agenda. And I appreciate the hard work that you did to push this through.
Thank you.
Mr. McGee?
I would just like to thank everyone in the audience for coming and attending tonight, as well as all the fine folks at home that are watching the meeting on TV. Be sure and get out and vote Saturday if you didn't already vote.
Mr. Nix? Ms. Sacree? A couple of things, I, I've got some comments that I'll have next week for, for Mr. Hogan and Mr. Pendleton, but I, Casey, just tonight in the council meeting, I really wanna thank you for, for being a, a true team member to this council, for being a leader, by being bold enough to step out and say things that you felt were right and stand behind that. We need more of that, and I'd really appreciate your professionalism and how you, you brought those issues to the council and, and stood behind them. We, we are a better council because of your service and your perspective to, to what you've done. And I just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and just a clarification, we're, we're gonna have final words next week?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, 'cause I didn't come with anything.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just wanted to take.
I would've worn a suit if I'd have known.
Well, no, I, I just.
Wear the suit Tuesday.
We'll rewind the tape.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to take advantage of this moment, because there'll be different people here for that next week than maybe here tonight, so I just wanted to do that. And I also wanna say, come back to one of my opening comments about what the city staff was able to do with the storm damage and turning an issue into an opportunity. And Pat, your, your leadership in crisis came through with flying colors, I just wanna thank you for that. And it, it reiterates the point that government can be innovative, and it can think on its feet, and it can come up with ways to, to save citizens' time and money, and, and you did it. So, so thank you and the staff very much for that. The last comment that I'm gonna make before I call us into executive session is to, just a reminder for all of us, and it comes from Psalms 127:1, and that is, unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain who build it; unless the Lord guards the city, the watchman keeps awake in vain. And with that, I'll call us into executive session in compliance with Section 551, 074 Personnel Matters.